Carl Lashley. Here. Kara Hagan, President. Andrea Kramer, here. Krista Spillane, here. Caroline Thorpott. Deanne McComb, here. Right roll call.
Thank you, please join us in the pledge. The Constitution is due to apply by the United States of America. It is due to be properly forwarded to its parents, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do you have any changes to the agenda that's in your package? Something came in in the last few minutes. So, someone wants the... Oh my gosh, I want to put it up.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, use the agenda in your package.
May I just tell the public to speak directly into your mic so that the public can pick you up, otherwise we might miss out on your voice.
Hello, can you hear me? Anybody else want to attest? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, minutes from October 19th in your package.
Motion to approve.
Second. I think Andrea won quietly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Bills in between? Motion to approve. Kara, second of that. Kara, you need to speak into your mic. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims? Motion to approve. Second. Discussion?
Yeah, I'm the... I called for verification down at City Hall on all the bills and it just seemed like there was a repeat of paintbrushes and rollers and stuff. I know we have lots of projects in progress right now. And I also know from redoing two houses that, you know, when you use oil bases, it's better just to throw them away. But I was wondering, and I'm not sure if anybody can answer this, if, when we have water-based paints, if their paintbrushes were being washed and reused, and same with rollers, because both can be done, it's really simple. And maybe it wouldn't save us a great amount of money, but it only takes like about five minutes to do that, so it wouldn't be a labor thing. So, can anyone tell me?
I think this does.
Yeah, okay to answer?
Please do.
I asked that very question and it doesn't sound like they're being cleaned and reused right now, so I definitely agree and I think that it's not too much to ask, so we can certainly have conversation with the people that are using the paintbrushes and the rollers and ask them to do that. Thanks for bringing it up.
We can discuss it next department meeting.
It's been around one, Zach Shari, the Philly, so it's worth bringing up again the fact that you're concerned by it as well.
Okay, so thank you.
Yep, thank you, good question. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Credit cards? Motion to approve. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article move to communications from the public. We first have the Miss South Dakota Scholarship Foundation, 2016. Do we have someone here representing this? We have a microphone over here that we would appreciate if you spoke into.
I can do that.
Thank you.
All right, is it on?
It should be.
I gotta get all up in there.
I got the email from Misty requesting that we come and kind of give you a detail outline of what's going on.
Can you state your name?
Ashley Lowing, sorry. Can you hear it? I can't hear you.
If you wanted to take it off the stand, you could fold it closer to your mouth, that's more convenient.
Is that better?
Yes.
Ashley Lowing, Scholarship Chairman. Misty asked us to be here for the donations that we had requested from the city, so here I am for your questions.
Thank you for coming and providing your financials. All the council members have copies of those. I think at this time it's appropriate to ask questions around how you would like the money dispersed and what you plan to do with the money, and it might be fairly simple for you, but you can do that.
So, in the past, when we received it, we have given it all to scholarship, which is our intention this year. However, I did receive a request from our executive director and our producer this year asking if we could potentially split that, doing 2,500 to scholarship, 2,500 to our production, since our costs are going up this year with it being our 70th. If it's not okay with you to do that, we will definitely put it all back into scholarship. We did apply for our 501(c)(3). The attorney who helped us file it says that he has pretty good faith that it's going to come through, so those are also, will be tax deductible at that point if it matters.
So, how, please ask any questions you'd like, but how would it work best for your organization to receive the funds from the city?
If we could do one lump sum, unless it's okay to split the two, then to do two checks. I mean, if you guys are fine with us using half of it for production, half of it for scholarship, they are two separate bank accounts, which is why you got two sets of information from us. And if you'd like us to put it all towards scholarship, we can certainly do that, and then one check is great. Usually, we give it to the reigning Miss South Dakota, so it would be the gal who is crowned our Miss South Dakota 2016, and it is marked in our book that says the City of Hot Springs gave $5,000 towards her scholarship.
I have a question about the, what's an in-kind scholarship?
In-kind scholarships are from local colleges, and they don't even have to be local, they're from colleges who say if a girl wins a certain spot, they will credit her X amount of dollars towards tuition if she goes to school there. We're pretty simple.
She's here for you guys to ask some questions if you have any concerns, so.
Your production is basically anything that goes into that, right? Not just putting up the stage and stuff there?
Yeah, the production covers, well, Ray Peterson does all of our production stuff. It covers our paint supplies, it covers costumes, it helps pay for our entertainers to come out, it helps pay, the lighting guy who's been doing our lighting comes out every year for free, all he asks is for airfare, so it helps pay for those types of expenses. And those expenses you will see on the profit and loss statement from our general fund.
Are there any other questions?
I do know we also give you a pretty good deal on the building, so I mean, it's more than $5,000 actually that we help.
And I didn't know that until I had emailed Misty today saying, it's our 70th, it's going to get pretty expensive, who would I talk to? And then I got an email back from someone saying, oh, they already give us a really good rate on the Mueller Center. So, I didn't know that, and I'm in charge of making sure all of that's listed in our program book, so that will get fixed this year.
Okay, I was going to suggest that, thank you.
Yes, it'll get taken care of.
Are there any other questions? And those of you in the audience can ask a question as well if you would. If not, I will thank you, Ashley.
I guess the only question, I have one question, is when they submitted for the budget purpose, how was their papers filled out? Was it filled out as a scholarship or was it filled out?
Yes, the Miss South Dakota Scholarship Foundation is how the paperwork is filled out.
And I don't know if our former president, Steve Shannon, had filled out the paperwork and submitted it, and I believe when I looked at it, he had requested it go either general fund or scholarship.
I think he told them scholarship.
Okay.
Sounds like they would send it out scholarship, but you prefer that?
That was my understanding.
And that's how, when I had spoken, you know, at the beginning or earlier this year, I had indicated it would all go to scholarship, and I had just gotten an email a couple of days ago asking if it would be okay to split that. And like I said, if it's not okay, it's not, that's fine, we'll put it towards scholarship, it's not a big deal.
I know I was here when they asked a couple of years ago, and that's what it was set up, scholarship, so it wasn't just for the Miss South Dakota Scholarship, it was split up amongst, all the way down from the little ones on up.
It gets really hard to split it all the way down. We end up giving out about $36,000 of the scholarships, and it gets hard when you break it out into little chunks. So, the last year, we put all $5,000 towards Miss South Dakota. However, again, if you would like us to split it up, I believe the easiest would probably be to do the top five, which will give you Miss South Dakota and the first four runner ups. Or we can, I mean, it's flexible, we're appreciative of the money, we'll do what you want with it, but.
I guess my feeling is sensitive setup for scholarships, that's what should go.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Probably in the future when you fill it out. It would be best to fill it out the way you want it.
Yeah, no, I'm totally fine with it, trust me.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Ed Harvey, would like to discuss U-turns. Here you are, Ed, just speaking to the microphone.
How's that? Can you hear me?
A little louder.
How about that?
Badder.
Okay. I saw this wonderful article in a newspaper about no U-turns in the city. There are some inconsistencies here. First off, it says that there's a basic law in South Dakota about not crossing the double yellow street line. Not exactly, you can't cross a solid line. The double yellow line only means you can't do it from either direction. The same state statute, 322625, defines a U-turn as turn so as to proceed in the opposite direction. Okay? So, if you're not doing 180 degrees, legally it's not a U-turn. It's right there in the law. Turning to go into a parking place is not a U-turn, as defined by state law. The other thing he said was that there's a place at the Evans where you can do a U-turn legally. The only thing that makes that legal is there's no line there, but the same state statute says that any such turning movement cannot be made unless it can be done safely and without interfering with other traffic. Now, if you do a U-turn at Minicotta, you're basically impeding the flow of four lanes of traffic. That doesn't make any sense. Then he says that backing into a place, backing out of a place if you don't go in properly the first time is horrendously dangerous. Well, I got news for him. When you back out of those armed parking places, I don't care whether to go back in or to go down the street, the danger is the same. There's nothing particularly different about trying to get into a parking place, and in fact, I've seen some of our senior citizens try two or three times to get into one of those places, coming from the correct direction. So, I don't think that holds water either. I guess, you know, the other thing that talks about crossing yellow lines is actually not in the statute so much as in the South Dakota Drivers Network. And it states very clearly, you may cross a solid yellow line to turn into driveways if it is safe to do so. Okay, does that mean that that's the only place you can cross a yellow line, is it a driveway? If that's true, what about parking lots? What about side streets? For instance, if you come from the south, go around the corner at the library, go toward the city park or the Legion, right there at the bridge, if you go across and cross the bridge, you have violated this. Or if you turn left to go over to the Alpamitters, you have violated this because neither one of those places is a driveway. So, I think that, as stated here in the article by the police chief, this doesn't hold water. You're not stating the state statute correctly. You know, if the city wants to do something, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, but let's do it right. If you want to make an ordinance that says you can't cross a yellow line to park on Main Street, then fine, make that an ordinance, do it the right way. Don't try to cite a state law that does not hold, you know, I mean, this is, I believe the legal term is capricious and what's the, arbitrary, as stated in this article, because it's all up to the individual on the side. The policeman's idea of what is safe is not necessarily the same as yours, or mine, or anyone else. So, I think that this needs, this issue needs to be readdressed, and if you're going to do it, do it right.
Ed, can I comment?
Sure.
I think we have two issues here, and one of them is, we have a state highway that goes through our town. The double line is actually a state highway.
Right.
And so, we have different regulations because it's state, and when it's a double line, yeah.
These are the state, okay, a double line only means that you can't cross it from either direction. Okay, there's nothing spectacular about a double line, other than it means nobody gets to go across it. And they're actually designated for passing, and that's in another section of the state law.
I don't think we have double lines at intersections.
That's not true.
They shouldn't be.
Right there at the police station, where the bridge is, there's a double yellow line all the way around that curve. Sorry, okay? If you go over by the parking lot at the county building, there's a double yellow line all the way down the street. If you try to pull into Dale's, there's a double yellow line all the way across. I mean, you know, give me a break. I drove around this town the other day just to, you know, for edification. I believe there's over 40 places where you have to cross a double yellow line to get to a business or a parking lot. There's not an alley around here that you could actually drive into.
And if I can just summarize, and we need to move forward here. The issue, the reason for the article was to notify the public that there is no U-turns on River Street in the Business District, and just to bring attention to the signs that are there now. So, you know, yep, there's other issues in town that we could address, but the main thing is, is we wanted the public to know that because those signs are posted now, that they can actually be ticketed, not that they couldn't before, but we wanted to kind of make sure people were aware that the signs are up and that U-turns are not allowed across the double yellows. There's two places, as you pointed out, on River Street, by the old Black Hills Power Building, and also at Minicotta where a U-turn is legal. That's just how it is right now, it's not legal anywhere else.
And my position is that pulling into park by the state definition of a U-turn, that's not a U-turn pulling into park. And if you cite before it, I'll guarantee I'll take you to court.
Thank you, okay.
I have one other issue that I would like to discuss, and that's the trees that you cut down over by the ski hill. I was told by the city administrator that they would either be pulled out or cut down ground.
We're still working to use a backhoe to pull off the stump of that remaining stump.
Okay, it needs to be taken out before the snow.
Thank you for, bear in mind.
Okay, quarterly reports is...
We have a opening for seal ports, actually, 7:15.
Oh, okay.
Whatever that's on.
All right. We are jumping ahead to bid opening. I'm A. This is for our solid waste and recycling services contract. They really are sealed. Okay, this is from Fall River Sanitation. Option one, which is curbside recycling. And again, on the price, based on 1,200 receiving services, recyclables, $4.07, and then solid waste, $10.47, coal, $14.54. Then option two, without recycling, $12,564 total, and is this per month? Are they getting paid a month?
Yes. The second would be a per month.
Okay, so let me start over here. Option one, per month, is $17,448 with recycling and solid waste pickup, for a total of $14.54. Option two is without recycling, the total price is $12,564, and the per household is $10.47. It's the summary there, around Fall River Sanitation. Where's Mary? She opens my envelope. Sander Sanitation. That'll do it? Oh my gosh. Do you want to have several copies? Oh, is this for all the councilmen?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'll give these to you in executive session. I'm not finding it easy here. There we go. They didn't do a monthly...
Total?
Total is $11.11, and then $5.54 for recycling for option one, and that is curbside, solid waste, and recycling. $11.11. Pardon?
Want to repeat that, please?
Yeah, this one's written a little different, so I apologize, I had to try to figure out what they were saying here. Option one, which is curbside recycling with solid waste pickup, per household, $11.11. Without recycling, with recycling, that would be an additional $5.42.
So, that'd be a total of 1611?
Something like that.
That's with recycling?
You'll get, you'll get all this. Okay? I'm just...
Winging it.
Winging it, yeah, thank you.
We go that.
Wing away here. Option two is without curbside recycling, and that's $8.02 per household. I don't know why these are different.
You got collection and disposal. So, you don't do a collection, $33.5.
Disposal. So, is the total then the 802 and the 435?
433.5.
Okay. So, roughly $12.36. Thank you. All right, and I'll share all these with the council.
Who's that one?
Sander Sanitation. Thanks for the clarification on that, appreciate it. We'll hand all these out. Thanks for the drive on that. A CD and a drive, a memory stick. This is from Kiefer Sanitation. I maybe not have numbers here. There we go. Option one, curbside recycling, solid waste and recyclables, $17,909 per month, so per household, it'd be $14.90, and that is with recycling. Option one, without recycling, $13,282, that'd be $11.05 per household. So, that's from Kiefer. And there's copies for the council here as well, looks like. So, we'll discuss all that later, but thank you all for submitting on time.
Please, codified law requires us to, if we're not going to accept one now, to table it, so we need a motion to second table.
I'll second it. All in favor of tabling at this moment?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we will talk about it.
What was the length of time period for this bid?
Of the contract terms?
Yes, please.
Was not stipulated yet. In the RFP, it was not stipulated the duration of a contract.
Okay, thank you.
We're still going to finalize the contract with whoever we decide to go with, if we decide to go with somebody new. We do have to notify those bidding within 30 days by written notice our decision, so it should come before that timeline.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Realize it's a big deal for the city.
Yeah, I have one. One of your options included a single point pickup, which seems to be the precedent here down along the Forest Service, that trailer, and then the lots up on by Shopko. They were heavily used, I mean, the bins up at Shopko were full all the time. Why wasn't that a factor? I mean, curbside is kind of nice, but is it essential?
We, you guys don't want to try and steal the question. We did consider single site recycling. The problem the city foresaw was that those not paying for the service would utilize it, and the city would then have to maintain or monitor, maintain surveillance on the site. In our RFP, we included the option, if they have an alternative proposal, to include that, which could include the single site recycling. I'm not sure I have reviewed the proposals yet, if anybody has included that. The city, though, we didn't want to provide a service that we could not make sure the citizens were only paying for. I know if Key Pop Springs Beautiful doing their single site, it was utilized pretty heavily by the members of Fall River County, also Custer County. We felt it'd be opening a can of worms to offer that service, then have to continually perform surveillance on it.
I guess I'm, I came from Boulder, Colorado, but recycling down there is a religious activity, right? And we came up here, been here seven years, and it's just been a real stumbling block team, trying to be a convert to no recycling and all that. We haul everything to Rapid now because they've got a nice facility up there. Single point, I could drive by somebody's curbside, we don't grapple with that if I was going to be malicious about it. It just seems like monitoring a single site or a two-site or whatever isn't all that crazy weird, and it gets the job done. You want to get stuff recited.
Oh, I might add to that, too, that I used the one that was at the Shopko quite a bit, and there was couches and all sorts of things, mattresses dropped off. And I did speak at a meeting a few months ago about what we did at the center. It was a small town in northern Minnesota. And they were very adamant about recycling. And they had a site. And what they did was they made it available on like Tuesday and Thursdays from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. only. And then the dump boxes were open and everyone could drop off their things within that timeframe. And after that, everything was locked, under padlock. The dump boxes were locked up. And they really had, they also had no problem with people dumping off their couches and their other garbage. I don't know what it is about Hot Springs, but they were very respectful of it there. And I don't know how we can really make the rest of the public aware of.
If we do go with recycling, we do realize that there needs to be improved education on that.
Yes.
And we're trying to support those who started recycling in Hot Springs. It wasn't as effective as we would have liked. There were major issues there. And we're trying to improve that. So we appreciate your comments, supporting recycling and different ideas. We do have input, as you heard from three different providers. So we're hoping that we can come to a good solution for all of us in Hot Springs. And we do appreciate your comments because it is going to be something very new for Hot Springs if we do go with curbside, which is what was in the RFP. And it will require a lot of education. So we appreciate your ideas in case curbside doesn't work because we do want that to work because we do think that would be effective.
Thank you for considering recycling. We're grateful for that.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
I think it should be noted, too, the last single site recycling efforts was done by a completely non-profit organization that put in a lot of volunteer time to do it and provide that service. So it's not to discredit what's been done. It was a great starting block. In fact, it hadn't died out because of its popularity. And it will keep up with it. So we're looking to take that model and apply it now to the city residents, whether it be curbside or the best fit for what the city can provide.
It might be noted, too, Nolan, that when she talks about couches and all that, we have done different dumping days through the year now. And that does help. It does get rid of some of that other debris. I was going to ask Roger, are those dump sites at the dump or are they throughout town that you use in Rapid or?
There's one as you go in from the south side on 79.
Is that at the dump site?
Where the main dump was, they have a 24-by-7 access point now. Where you have dumpsters for cardboard, metal, and newsprint. They don't cover us all the stuff that you need.
Yeah, similar to what we do with our brush right now out at our...
They also have that. Yeah, back in the back, they have several dumpsters for putting in.
Which could be an option that we could use to maybe...
Well, those are the things we can talk about. We have to address what we received in the RFP.
Right.
Again, we really appreciate those. And Nolan, I appreciate you covering for me there because I didn't mean to imply anything that the organization that did recycling here was too effective. And we're trying to actually implement it officially and really appreciate them getting it started here. Okay, I'm going to go back up to quarterly reports. Item A, Southern Hills Economic Development is... Anybody there hear from that organization?
Yes.
There you are.
I'm hiding.
You're hiding in the dark.
It's hard for me to do.
I've got these bright lights in my eyes.
How's this?
Andrea, you want to tell everybody who you are?
I'm Andrea Powers. I'm the Executive Director of Southern Hills Economic Development.
Can't hear you.
No, can you hear me?
Thank you.
I don't have a very loud voice, so. And I'm here to give our quarterly report. I haven't been here for a full quarter yet. I've been here about 10 weeks in the position. But in that time, we have increased our membership by 20 new members here in Hot Springs alone. We cover all of Fall River County. And we've had some renewals in Edgemont as well. We are working to grow the Dakota Rising Program, which is a fellowship, I shouldn't say fellowship, it's a program, a three-year program for entrepreneurs who are not startups but who are ready to expand their business and aren't quite sure how to do it. It's a state-run program. It lasts for three years. Applicants, if they are accepted, they become a part of a cohort. So it's almost like an educational program. In year two, after you complete year one, you receive a $10,000 grant. And then after you finish your third year, you become an alumnus and you're still very active in the process. Currently, we have one in the community, and that's Kristen down at the vault. I have eight new perspectives for this year. I'd really like to see us grow our local Dakota Rising project. Faulkner, no, is it Faulkner? Faulkton. Faulkton has a huge program. And they've probably had 16 fellows since 2009. Certainly, we should be able to do that as well. And I would like to emphasize that the grant money that they receive doesn't come from Shedco, it comes from the state. Okay? I've been doing a lot of facilitation of new businesses here in town. It's really nice that Shedco is getting to be known in the community and people who are wanting to move here and start new businesses are coming to see me. We're delivering workshops this winter. We have one that's coming up on using your profit-loss statements to drive your business. One for economic plan development and another one for QuickBooks. Hopefully, those will all be delivered by February. Our community engagement process is in the third month of a two-year process. Right for the month of November, the convening committee along with Kristy Wagner, who's our coach, will be going out into the community, surveying various groups. And right now, we have 18 groups on the docket for November. We've started networking events that we're going to be having every other month. It's not a question-and-answer period. It's just a time for everyone who's a business owner to get together and be collegial in the community. And lastly, we're working on our website redesign. What we'd like to see is a design where anybody, be they a family, a retiree, or a potential business that wants to move into town, will look at our website and can say, hey, these people have everything we need to live here. So that's the goal of our website. Any questions? Those are the main projects.
I don't have any questions, but I'm impressed and I'm happy to hear that there's so much progress being made.
Thank you.
You're in the Black Hills Power Building, right?
For now.
That's for next meeting.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Andrea. Appreciate the readout. Okay, I think we can make it to page two now. Personnel, I'd like to lump them all together, but I want you to make special attention on item E. We have a full-time new hire on here. No other big issues, I don't think. So if I can put all personnel together and get a motion, I appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor of all personnel?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Thank you. Committee reports, Georgia, we'll get your name on there next time.
Okay.
I have it handwritten in here, but sometimes we just follow the template.
The next meeting will be Monday.
Monday?
Yeah.
All right. Airport Advisory Committee?
We didn't have a meeting. They didn't have anything really they wanted to discuss. But we do have some issues for the grazing at the airport. We have all the crops that need to be knocked down. If we can get grazing and knock those stumps down, then we're going to look at disking it and spraying for weeds and then possibly seeding it for planting upstairs.
And you got an email from me about Friday. There's a special meeting Friday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Georgia. Uh, Deanne, now our meeting's Wednesday, right?
The meeting is Wednesday. Or no, excuse me, it's Thursday noon.
In the chamber?
The Chamber Board, yes. Because the chair is a meeting is Wednesday.
You're right. You're right. We changed it on this one.
Yes. They're lumping...
They're lumping one.
Yes. Okay. Chamber Board meeting at 12:00 on Thursday, November 5. And I'll just go right into the landfill meeting. Seven o'clock here at the Mueller Center, Wednesday, the 4th of November. And that's the Custer Fall River landfill. So I encourage people to attend.
And that was when?
Wednesday night at 7:00 here at the Mueller.
Thanks, Deanne. We look forward to the report from that. Caroline is not present. I don't believe they had a meeting yet this month. All right, thank you. Item F, Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Kira.
I wanted to just start with a couple of comments that were overheard in that C room. This was a very good lady's newsletter. This pool has done more for me than all the painful treatments I got in the physical therapy that I went to. I can even do the rings now. This was an athlete veteran from the dump that sent, made that comment. Another one that was overheard in the sauna was, I came down here for my summer job in Canada. I have a few weeks off before I have to fly back to Switzerland. I stopped at Mount Rushmore and I'm staying in a hotel in Deadwood. But I came here especially for Evans Plunge. My neighbor told me about the natural mineral waters. So it's really nice to hear these comments from people and all the help that Evans Plunge has been doing for them. And we've been doing a lot of upgrades on Tuesdays. It's our volunteer day. So if anybody has some free time, please come down to help. We appreciate the volunteers. Just sign up at Evans Plunge front desk or you can also go online. There's a drop-down menu under contact desk for volunteers. So what we've done last Tuesday, new paint for the hallway entering the locker rooms. We've covered the royal blue with a really nice soft beige. And we plan on hanging interpretive signage throughout the hallway with some real nice frames and some old-time photo pictures of the history, telling a little bit about the Evans Plunge history. We've shampooed the carpets in the lobby area. Thank you, Georgia.
Yes.
We thoroughly cleaned the windows inside and out. There is one set of windows we got rained out. And if there's one in the lobby, when you look up, that looks sturdy, it's actually plastic glass. We couldn't really get that one clean. We've done a lot of intensive paint throughout around the windows and on the hallway that was done last year, just to kind of go over and freshen things up. And we have some new hooks installed at the gym to better organize the gym accessories. The life jacket bin was moved to poolside to alleviate congestion near the front desk, the front door. Evans Plunge was fixed as well. So again, we really appreciate the volunteers. Without you, we wouldn't be getting as far as we are with beautification at Evans Plunge. I have some financial info, some good news and bad news. Well, it's not really bad news. It's this time of the year, every year, we are coming out of our tourist season and into the winter months. So I guess I'll start with the revenue. We're down, now these are, these are pretty close. I'm going to say that. If you want specific figures, please go to Misty at any hall. But the numbers I have here are we're down $5,562.46. But the good news is...
In October.
In October, yes. In October. But the good news is, last year, in 2014, our revenue was $32,340. This year, our revenue was $40,687. So we're up about $8,300 in revenue in October from last year.
Yay.
That's good. And our expenses, last year, 2014, were $74,101. And this year, they're $46,249. So we've trimmed expenses. Thank you, Nolan. Misty and Trudy have something to do with that, too. And Chris, and Ron, and Evans Plunge, and all the employees there are working really hard to tighten things up. That's $27,000 down in the expenses. So, I mean, I'm just so happy with the way things are going there. Everybody's doing a really good job. We've got a couple of events, November 8 through the 14th. We've got our veterans and active military receive a half-off admission and free admission on Veterans Day. So come down, November 8 through the 14th. Veterans and active military receive half-off admission. And this also includes November 11th for Veterans Day as well. We'll be closed Thanksgiving Day, November 26th, and Thanksgiving weekend, November 27th through 29th. You'll receive 25% off admission for everybody, if you're family. And don't forget about the 50% off, the last two hours we're open every single day discount. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kira. That was a very thorough report. We do have a lot of good things going on there. Really appreciate the efforts there, you and all the volunteers and the staff, of course. Krista, I know you had a meeting today in Kefauver Parks.
Yes, I did. And I also met with Chris on Friday down at the Mueller Center. And so we got Parks and Recs and the...
Model change, Phil.
Yeah.
Box store.
Just one second, please.
I can tell you about the honoring our heroes while Chris is getting ready.
I got it. Go ahead.
Okay. Don Ackerman was actually at the meeting today as well. And so we got an update, I guess, on what his vision is for the honoring our heroes. The idea was to put some plaques through the Freedom Trail. And then put some statues there as well. He has ordered some concrete or some stone pieces that say, you know, whatever war, and he didn't really specify what wars he had, but he said he had three or four of them on order. And they will be here within the next month or so. And so we're excited to see what those will be. And then we can see what or how we'll be able to add those to the Freedom Trail and go from there. So it's still kind of work in progress, but he's working on it. And we're excited to see what he comes up with, so.
Thank you, Andrea.
You're very welcome.
And then we also talked about Centennial Park Pavilion, about, more about the details are being worked out on the pavilion. And then we talked about Welcome Park is a place for the gazebo that was gifted to us by the State Veterans Home. And more discussion is needed for that, for that possibility. And then we went over a draft on the park's ordinance and the park's reservation policy. And again, we're doing, but these are just in the first stages where more meetings and discussions will be discussed on those. And then Friday, I met with Chris and we talked about the different things that are coming up at the Mueller Center. And I wanted to remind you guys about the Throwback Thursday movie. That will be on the 12th this month here at 6:00. And then the blood drive will be... he didn't really specify what wars he had, but he said he had three or four of them on order, and they will be here within the next month or so. And so we're excited to see what those will be, and then we can see what or how we'll be able to add those to the Freedom Trail and go from there. So it's still kind of work in progress, but he's working on it, and we're excited to see what he comes up with, so.
Thank you, Mary.
You're very welcome.
And then we also talked about Centennial Park Pavilion, about, more about the details are being worked out on the pavilion. And then we talked about Welcome Park is a place for the gazebo that was gifted to us by the State Veterans Home, and more discussion is needed for that, for that possibility. And then we went over a draft on the park's ordinance and the park's reservation policy. And again, we're, but these are just in the first stages where more meetings and discussions will be discussed on those. And then Friday, I met with Chris, and we talked about the different things that are coming up at the Mueller Center. And I wanted to remind you guys about the Throwback Thursday movie. That will be on the 12th this month, here at 6:00. And then the Blood Drive will be here at 11:00 p.m. on Thursday, the 12th. The Wine and Rees at 7:00, that's through the Boys and Girls Club. And that's about all that we had for those, for that meeting. That's enough.
Yeah, thank you both. It was a very good meeting, and we do appreciate the honoring our heroes group and their efforts for the Veterans Town. Ms. Barbara Berry, Planning and Zoning Update, please.
Yes, just for a real quick update for the Planning and Zoning Commission, they are going to be holding a public hearing on November 18th at their next meeting. It will be at City Hall at 7:00. The public hearing will be for a proposed ordinance change to the section that's requiring, currently it requires any existing commercial property that does not have a paved parking lot to actually pave their parking and driveways. We're making alterations to that based on some legal advice. And if you want to hear about that, come to the public hearing. Again, it's Wednesday, November 18th at 7:00 at City Hall. After that public hearing, it will be coming forward to the City Council for its readings.
Kim, what time was that public hearing?
The meeting's at 7:00. We anticipate the public hearing to be at 7:15.
Thank you, Kim. Public safety, Kim.
We had a meeting at which time we discussed mutual aid agreement between us and the county. Basically, this is an agreement that's already in effect, but it's coming up to be renewed. It's kind of one of those deals that basically have a major breakdown in weather or whatever. If the county helps us, we pay them. If we help the county, they pay us. Basically what it boils down to. There was some discussion brought up forward by the fire department, at which time I left the meeting. Reasons for that are my own. If anybody cares to hear about it, you can talk to me anytime about it, but I'm not going to discuss them here. With that, I don't know, Nolan continued on with the safety meeting or not.
The law was discussed is when the city closes a road, just to alert dispatch to notify all first responders. So that's the policy. Unofficially, it was the policy. We informed me a more formal policy to notify dispatch when a road is closed.
I guess on that same comment, you, Mr. Mayor, are, you know, person of apology. I have an apology.
Emergency manager.
He's an emergency manager.
Emergency management. And if you'd like to put that in a paper, that's okay with me. I can offer him my sincere apology for leaving him stranded in the meeting. We have public works. I want to go right into that.
Okay, great.
We're discussing water sewer rate increases. We're not going to do anything until after the first of the year probably on that. We'll have some information, some discussion amongst the, for the council. Project updates, Albany continues. The guy's running into a lot of rock up there, folks, so just kind of go along with it. And it's kind of a small group. National and Garden Street, there again, we're kind of waiting for National to get all buttoned up, and then hopefully we'll be able to asphalt both of them before winter. Loaded, the buildings with a new loading dock are still being built. There was a couple other-
Hunting season is actually slowing down, isn't it?
Yeah. I agree.
The guy making them is a hunter.
I'm sure most of the gentlemen here can understand why hunting season looks slow somewhat like that down.
I'm a hunter.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen.
It's just South Dakota.
Yeah, yeah. We discussed some of the work being done up at Valley View. There was a question on the fluoride that we put in our water, which is, we put in just enough to maintain what the federal standards say we have to. And we discussed the water leak up on Cobra. There again, that water leak was a result of years ago, when they first came out with plastic pipe, it was deemed indestructible. So when people put it in the ground, they didn't worry about big rocks being thrown in on it, or putting sand around it or anything. And as a result, now that indestructible plastic pipe has developed little holes that let the water out. So we have to fix them. That's what went on down there, those plastic pipes sitting on a rock. That was the end of that.
It's fixed.
It's fixed. And hopefully, if things work right, we'll get the asphalt put back down there when we do the rest of these and save them.
All right. Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it. Uh, Georgia's golf course?
We didn't have a meeting, but we just, excuse me, Jason and I communicated right now. We'll set up a meeting if we have anything special that's coming, but the golf course is still open. We still have golfing going on.
It's only 70 degrees at the moment.
Yeah, so please use our golf course. Mostly, we have members-
I was just saying, yes, they do.
Members that are using it, so not a lot of revenue is being generated. We were like a minus 7,000 on our income and expenses right now, but we're getting close to the end of the year, so that's not too bad.
That was it. Thanks, Georgia. All right, I'm gonna, next time, probably add Volunteer Fire Department Board, Andrea Kramer has offered to attend those meetings and report back to the council, so I want to thank Andrea for that.
That first meeting that I'll be attending is next Tuesday at 7:00 p.m.
And that's at the fire conference. Thank you. Appreciate you helping out with the-
Can I make a note that we probably should be putting volunteers to do our work in the minutes we can, recognize them for our liability?
Yeah. The only reason you do that is if you choose to cover them, and we talked about that in Admin Finance, and I'm not sure that's an option we want to take.
We were told that we were supposed to, is why we did that.
I'd like to tell you what I know about it at another time. We talked about that Admin Finance meeting if you want.
Okay.
All right. Okay, anything else for committees? All right, I am going to move to ordinances. Item A, First Reading Ordinance 1162, Supplemental Appropriation Ordinance, Light Up Our Town. That is in your package. Has a lot to do with that, with receiving donations for Christmas ordinance, right?
So share some information.
Please.
The Supplemental Appropriation Ordinance is for $7,500. So far, we have received $6,575 in donations. We will only spend what we receive in donations, but we are running out of time in the year to appropriate budget authority because we didn't plan for this. So you'll see an unfind fund balance of 925 listed on your supplemental appropriation ordinance. You know, only reason we've used that is if there were more donations. But we have received, the good news is, we have received $6,575 in donations towards this project, and so we have ordered and are purchasing more lights, and we plan on lighting up our town.
Can I get a motion to accept the first reading?
I'll give you that.
I think motion. How about I second it?
Any other discussion? Motion carried for the first reading? Thank you. Item B, Second Reading of Proposed Ordinance 1161, Amendment to Chapter 22 relating to trimming of trees and shrubs or shrubs within or overhanging the public driveway. We added, we discussed this the first time, and there was a request to include fire hydrants.
Yeah.
And that has been done. And I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have changes when we add to it like that? Do we have to go back and start over with the first meeting, or can we continue with the second?
You're expected to have changes in the first and the second. It's okay.
So is there any other discussion on this proposed change to ordinance 1161? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? All right, all business. Discussion and possible motion for alternative nuisance abatement process. Kim?
Hi, well, I hope that you've all read your memo that I put in your packets. It basically outlines the costs generalized of what it would cost to do what we lovingly call a clean and lean. That's when we take the legal rights and go onto a person's property and decide what stays and what goes, and then charge them as a lien to their property. The other option that I'm offering is to work with them a little bit better. If they are showing initiative, if they are showing interest in cleaning up their property, that we aid them. They still get a lien on their property, but it's about half the cost. And in doing so, we can also use volunteer work. That also helps in just creating a little bit more of a sense of community and breaking down the barriers that a lot of times that junk and accumulation of debris can create around people themselves within their own neighborhood. I'm hoping that at the end of the message, I had a couple of requests for at least two dumpster locations at this point. I think that there are people that have been putting out a lot of time and money that they really don't have, but doing their best at stepping forward and doing their part and trying to see that we could possibly aid them in getting towards completion. I also wanted to add just a real quick thing, that we've been having a lot of real good success with our volunteers, even from the point of our tree and shrub management ready for winter. I've had a couple of people volunteer and help out other people to get sidewalks cleared and streets cleared, too. So I think the volunteer aspect of this option that I'm offering tonight will really be successful. So if you had any questions, or I'd like to have at least some sense of a direction on those last two items that I put on your memo.
I got a lot of positive feedback from both of those that you've said, so I'd like to make a motion. We accept our new nuisance abatement process.
I'll second that. And I, too, would like to say that I've received a lot of positive feedback about this as well, so I appreciate the motion and the second. Any other discussion?
I guess I think this is probably a good deal, but I'd like to see the council have a little more input on each one individually. Simply due to the fact that a lot of us have been here for a while, and we could kind of-
I'm counting on you to help me, absolutely.
-get a lot of our input into, you know, because some of these places, I know one or two of them you've been working with that have been on the list and have been worked with for years.
Right.
And it gets almost cleaned up, and then all of a sudden, all this stuff magically reappears. So I think, you know, we kind of need to watch some of that, and it's, you know, we can't be hauling, and I agree, we need to help people, don't get me wrong, but a one-time thing is good, otherwise it could end up to, we're hauling a U-Haul down there every six months to clean up the same property.
And I understand that there are some people, and actually, a number of people I'm working with right now that have more of a medical condition that makes this a really difficult thing for them. Those people, you handle it a little bit differently, but what I was going to do is I gave you a little bit of a synopsis on two families that I'd be interested in. If you'd like more information on that, photos, things like that, I can add that. I'm not real positive about talking about individuals right now, unless I get into a specific legal situation, and then I think that's okay. But I can give you more, I can expand on that, more information, and for any one of these, I intend to do a summary report for you of what they've done so far, what they've told me as far as their ability to pay, what they've told me so far as their ability to do the work, and so that you're just looking at it from the same standpoint I am. For example, I got a call this past week, last week, from a lady needing some help. She told me she was disabled. She told me that she wasn't able to do the work herself. And in doing my due diligence, I found out she was a renter, so I just called up her property owner, and I said that they had to do the work. There's definitely people there that had the wherewithal to do that, so I'm trying to do my due diligence, too. I do have a great respect that we are using taxpayer money for this. Even if we help out, if we get a situation, and I'll take for Tim, in my contracts that I deal with with the people doing these cleanups, I say basically, this is your one-shot deal to get this thing done. We're going to work together. I'm going to respect you. You're going to respect me, and we're going to get this done together. If they come back with a whole bunch of other stuff, we skip over that nice part and we go straight to legal. And they understand that situation. It's their one point of redemption, and if we don't get compliance after that, if we get new stuff that comes on, then I know I'm dealing with another thing, and then we have to deal with that differently. And actually, I've been talking with different people around the state, trying to use some techniques that we used back at the last place that I worked, where we actually deal with people on a mental health issue, for elderly health issues, things like that, that we can, we have a lot of different tools in our toolbox that we can do to make sure that people are living in a safe environment.
Yeah, Kim, I really appreciate you bringing your experiences and a kinder, gentler approach to nuisance abatement to the city.
Well, I appreciate your support so much. You really don't know. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
Any other discussion? I have a motion in a second, so I'm going to take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, Kim, you have some work to do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. All right, page three. New business, motion to set public hearing for applications, preferably applications, for vacant liquor license held by the City of Hot Springs for November 16th at 7:15 p.m.
I'll make a motion that we have here. I'll second it.
Georgia and Anne, in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. If you have a concern about the vacant liquor license, please join us November 16th at 7:15 p.m. Item B, Discussion and possible motion to sign mutual aid agreement between Fall River County and the City of Hot Springs. Tim talked about this already?
Make the motion only if you're willing to.
I second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for that. I think it's an important one. Item C, Discussion and possible motion to approve general training repayment policy.
We talked about this at the admin meeting, and I'll make a motion to, that we approve the policy.
I'll second it. Deanne, be there by a nanosecond, huh? Any discussion on this? We've had a little bit already. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, Discussion and possible motion to approve replat of Peter's Track of Block 5 of Stewart's second edition. That's in your packages.
I'd like a little bit more information.
Can somebody give us more information on that? Is there someone present, or Kim, or you don't have?
I was hoping somebody from Anderson would be here. This was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It is a merger of three parcels. All three of the parcels had been strictly owned by the same people on South Garden Street. They are looking- They are looking to sell their property, and it was required by the title company that they get the descriptions and location, the actual pin locations of each one of these parcels identified, and the parcels themselves merged into one lot. There's the part, I was talking with Georgia today, and I think this is probably where most of the questions will come from. There's a part that says, and I don't have it with me, but it says something to the effect of city property.
Yeah.
And they do not mean city of Hot Springs property, they mean property within the city.
Oh.
And it's a very generalized term used in, I guess, the deeds, just to describe land that's been kind of extra. This was land that had been once part of a railroad that was long, long gone, but had been actually purchased, but had never really, during those transfers, been really defined. This particular merging plat will kind of correct those items so that this can be transferred to another owner.
What came as a long section?
The long skinny one, yeah.
Okay.
Was the quote-unquote city land.
And then the two that are...
And then there's two other ones. And there's a tiny little...
These two in the long section?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's like three in a row, and then you'll see like a tiny little triangle off to the side, that's actually in the river. So, and it's, this is at a corner location of an addition, so that's why it's all done as a corner piece.
And this was all the same owner before?
Correct.
It's just combining the three lots into one?
Just correcting it so that they can transfer the property.
I think I need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Clarification, thanks, Kim.
Is this like saying yes, or?
Kim, can you give us layman terms or words of them?
Sure, if you're from, if you're going from the American Legion underneath the Viaduct, it's the first house on the left-hand side. And there's, if you go from that house, that's the smallest of the lots, then there's an area behind it, towards the river, and then along the river.
I believe 18 is actually the bypass, the university.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's right there, it's right along the Freedom Trail.
Right along Freedom Trail?
Yeah.
So it's down by...
It's on the other side of the Viaduct from, from the American Legion. It's directly opposite.
Does it have any of the water that runs through it from the tail or not?
I, I don't know that, I don't want to speculate. I think that is actually in that little corner piece that the city owns, but I don't know that for certain.
Can I make a motion to table this until it's clear to me?
I think I had a motion in a second already, right, to discuss? So I have to continue with that, can I?
Unless Deanne says it's okay?
No, it's okay. It's okay.
So you're rescinding your motion then?
I am, I'm rescinding.
Okay, that's what I need. Okay, so if that's what you want, I mean, council, it's your decision.
That's fine, if anybody needs extra time.
If anybody also needs any more information on this, stop by City Hall, the big map in the conference room is really easy to explain where everything is.
Okay.
I think I need a second on the motion.
Oh, sir.
Okay, so all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So there's no one here? Okay. Thank you all for the good discussion and the decision there. Item B, motion to circle city property, we included in the December, is it second?
It's actually second, yeah.
State Veterans Home auction, the State Veterans Home has offered to let us piggyback off of their auction with the few items we have after our last auction, so I need a motion to agree to that.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Actually, I do have something. I see that we are, there's a lot of Evans Plunge things like drink glasses, shot glasses, Rubik cubes, snow globes.
Did you want to start, Andrea?
No. My point was, I can't imagine that we're going to, I don't know if I say, make any money off of them. Would it be maybe better off, if people are looking for donations for different things or little giveaways, to maybe use them that way, then I'm just not sure who's been buying snow globe sharpeners, 12 boxes of them, I'm just saying, I'm not sure.
Like the grab bag box?
Yeah, you know, I don't know if, instead of giving our current Evans Plunge items away that we've actually spent money on that, you know, instead of giving those away, can we give these away as gifts versus most getting none of them?
Some of the items going to be auctioned off are like shot glasses with the chest and the top, so we don't, can't really give those away. Some are keychain and flasks, which is pretty...
We don't think it's appropriate at a family place that we have shot glasses and flasks.
Yeah, we have given away those.
Or do we think that's appropriate to give away to children and give grab bags?
We have been contributions to like...
Kind of fair, she had them in our store. I didn't know that.
Well, that was, they were purchased prior to the city owning the plunge, and we have just made the decision that we do not think it's appropriate for the city to sell those types of items. And so we don't want to just throw it away if there's any opportunity to sell.
To answer your question, we have given some stuff away that is child appropriate, that is usable in that sense. There's a product called Operation Shoebox, I think Chris Pinnell's a part of, they said shoebox is full of goodies overseas to children for Christmas, so we donated items to that for that cause. If you're at the Friends and Library Carnival this last weekend, a lot of prizes were given up then, but the next day, some prizes were re-gifted, the holiday trick or treat.
Gifted, huh? Great.
And like the Homecoming parade, we threw out some items as well, so we have some in hand for those purposes, but a lot of this we just cannot give it away, so we're trying to...
How about your box, postcards for the area, the postcard?
They're all faded, the majority are faded. In about 10 years, it could be vintage postcards, but we're in that in-between stage right now.
Well, it's either inappropriate or...
I was just asking, wasn't it?
That's a good question.
It is.
No, it's a great question, I already asked some of that myself, so...
Thank you.
Any, it's the decision of the council. So all in favor of the list as it is?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you feel this stuff going to that department or is it just going to general?
When their enterprise funds, it goes into the enterprise fund. So if it belongs to Evans Plunge, that number goes into Evans Plunge. If it was owned by police or any other governmental activity or fund, then it goes into the general.
Thank you.
You're welcome, questions? Item F, motion to approve multiple 2016 retail wine, retail liquor, and packaged liquor renewal applications, and you have the list in your package.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G, motion to approve lifeguard training in Rapid City from November 13th through November 15th.
Motion to approve.
Ann, Andrea. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item H, motion to approve trainee request from Huntsman Hot Springs Police Department for Jason and Chris to attend field training officer class in Sturgis, December 1st through the 3rd. They will be coming home each night, it's just the travel to Sturgis and back. I make that motion to approve?
Oh, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Miss Defense Officer report.
Thank you. Tomorrow marks my one-year anniversary. And I must say, at the beginning of the meeting tonight, when you were giving cookies, I was kind of dumbfounded with the difference that you're made, both in my own personal opinion of the way things work and obviously the way the community sees what's happening here, since you're gifted things when you came. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city administrator for working so closely with me over the last year, and the council, and also the citizens for being patient enough to allow us the opportunity to clean up a couple of years of undone work. I'm so excited to say that we are so, ever so close, and we're going to keep things on track going forward as long as you keep me in this position. We have some good announcements to make for November, we have several holidays. If the council chooses to follow what the state does, the governor did declare we can get off at noon the day before Christmas and then also the day after Thanksgiving are holidays for city employees. So that's November 27th and then noon on December 24th.
And that'll be on the agenda next, then, for the council.
It's actually already approved, our personnel policy approved and our state approved, so unless there's a change, then the council has to make a motion to change that.
Okay, so...
Go, finish, go.
Okay, great.
See how nice policies and...
Yes. I worked on that.
State minimum wage increases January 1st also, so our state is changing from 8:50 to 8:55 an hour. That's all I have, and let Nolan take it. Thank you.
I kind of feel cheated, you guys get a bigger audience with your reports than we report, there's less people out there. We're waiting for those to stay up late, it's nice.
Yeah, but yours was more devoted.
Well, my anniversary is not until next month, so I'll skip over that until two meetings from now. Just for the public's information, the park restrooms are being winterized right now, so there's a good chance if you're using a park, you'll find the restrooms are now closed. Just FYI there. We did have a delay on National Avenue, I think Tim did a good job explaining what the delay was and when we expect to have that reopened. A lot of our asphalting coincides with other projects, so when National gets asphalt, so does Garden Street, so does now Colbrook Avenue, which we're all very excited to get those, not gravel but hard surface. Our last dump week was last week. We expect at our next Public Works meeting to discuss 2016 dates, and once we have those set, we'll make them available to the public and also the Star so people can plan the cleanups around that time. We are marking non-working lights throughout town with duct tape, so if you see a light with duct tape on it, please leave the duct tape on that light so those who fix the lights knows that that light's not working correctly. The light at the Dollar Inn was down, if you saw it over the weekend, that was the DOT working on it, it was not hit, it was the DOT making an improvement for that light. I have not been out there today to see if it's back up yet. The golf course, like Georgia said, is still open, our weather is pretty amazing down here, so we do have new November hours, weather permitting. The clubhouse is open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., I believe it is. It does get dark at 5:00 now, so cards, last time they can go out is 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. If there's a group or larger parties, call ahead, Kathy can make exceptions to those groups or organizations. We do expect though, once the weather gets much colder and colder, too cold to irrigate, we'll blow out our irrigation lines and not be able to irrigate anymore, so once that happens, then the course is pretty much officially closed. You can still walk the course, the pins will be cut in the approaches, so you can't walk on the greens, but it's still a walkable course in the winter months. And then the last thing I have to report is the December 3rd auction for the items we just surplus, it's actually December 2nd. We've heard both dates, so we just want to confirm with the public, that's December 2nd, and the State Veterans Home, you'll have both city items and also many state items as well to be auctioned off. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Misty, I am so grateful you've been here a year, it has gone by so fast, and I really appreciate your patience and courage to stick with the city, and I'm really, she's done an exceptional job of getting our finances in order, and I'm personally grateful for that.
I second that, thanks.
I have a cookie, so. But I want to take the time to thank Nolan as well and all the city workers. It takes a lot of work to get these papers together here, and it's a big effort, and I really want to acknowledge the staff because a lot of work went into this, and I appreciate the council for taking the time to review the issues and vote the way they thought was appropriate to move the city forward. Appreciate that. Also, in case you haven't heard, there's a draft EIS out there for the VA. If you do not have access to the internet, we have a CD at City Hall, the library has it up on a PC there. There's 60 days from the time they issued the draft EIS to comment. I know that there's Save the VA who's trying to extend that, but that's not officially what's happened, so you do have 60 days for sure. Please take the time to look over that and make sure it's in your best interest for our community.
We do have some public hearings that will be...
September, ah, September, December 1st, Save the VA is having a workshop, and then what's the other date? December...
I believe they're talking the 3rd, but I'm not sure the VA has set a hard date for that session or location.
But there will be a public workshop sponsored by the VA system for, after the Save the VA group, so sometime soon after that in December. I do not remember the date off the top of my head, do you, John? Okay. The Star and us will make sure you're aware of when that is.
I'm not sure one's been set yet, to be honest, or the location. That's the official public comment form.
Yeah, but you can go online, there's several avenues to take to write comments, so we encourage you to do that. A lot of activities still out at our airport, but I won't go into all of that, but we're still working on the master plan, there's quite a bit of activity around that. But again, thank you all for attending, and especially the diehards that made it to the end of the meeting, all three pages of it. Appreciate you attending, and someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for an executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you all, we will somehow find a room.
I believe dressing for next door is...
We will be taken to cookies with us. Chris, you want a cookie?
Yes.
Right there.